I have five o'clock, we can go ahead and get started. Tonight, we have a special meeting to have two conversations and then followed by an executive session. So to get started, we will do roll call. I will start with Director Barrows.
Here.
Director Decker.
Here.
Director Smith.
Here.
And I'm also here, we are all present and accounted for. Our first item on the agenda is a conversation regarding technology migration. And Christina Iremonger is going to take the lead on this. So I'm going to pass it over to her. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, I was asked to discuss in particular on the infrastructure modernization, the impact that that may have on our end users, so our teachers, our admin, our students. And so in the idea of modernizing our infrastructure, part of the work would include a migration to Microsoft from Micro Focus. So Micro Focus is an edirectory system, and it's a powerful system, but it is not the industry standard. And so Microsoft Azure Active Directory is what most K-12 systems use. And so when we migrate to Microsoft, what we would have available to us is that full array of features that Microsoft offers. We currently have many of these features available to us because we buy them in addition to our current infrastructure. So these features would be provided as part of our basic licensing for Azure Active Directory. And in these features, we do have teachers that already use a number of these features, but we also have teachers that prefer other things like Google and all of that. So we will continue to keep those things the same. So in connecting to the digital resources on the user end, our teachers and students will connect the same way they've always connected. We will continue to layer our Google domain on top of our directory because with Google, the Google domain allows us to manage and access all of the Google Suite. So Google Docs, Google Sheets, Google Slides, all of those things. So we'll continue to make sure that those are available. We'll also continue to keep Zoom as one of our major platforms for next year. But one thing to be aware of is Microsoft Teams is available once we have our licensing for Active Directory. So we'll make a decision about that as a community, once we get closer to turning that on. But we'll keep with Zoom next year. So nothing really should change on the user end. However, there may be a few new tools. One of the things that we will be able to move away from is our group-wise email system. That is tied to our edirectory system. And we'll be able to shift over to Microsoft Outlook. And when we do a shift like that, we want to make sure that we have the training in place for our teachers and our end users, including our students, so that they know how to use the full advantage of that system. Outlook is a powerful email system, it offers a lot of features. And so we'll try to do that, knowing that there's going to be some training required. Some people already use it, so that will be something that we need to strategize around. The other things that may come out with the tools that will be available in Microsoft Active Directory will strategically plan to roll those out, those advanced features that people might be interested in. And we'll conduct what I would call microburst informational trainings as we go throughout the year, once we know when we're ready to cut over to new features. And we'll try to plan that according to maybe times in the year. Teachers' times are very busy from day one, but let's try to strategically plan those with the E A leadership, so that we're not overwhelming teachers. The goal will be to set up both systems until we are 100% sure that when we cut over, those systems will work, those new systems will work. So we want to be very strategic and careful in how we plan to roll this out and make sure that our teachers have training in advance of turning on any feature that we may ask them to use. Most of the work with the infrastructure modernization is going to happen behind the scenes. So there won't be a feel or an impact on the user end. But as we've discussed previously, we are looking to do a hybrid cloud, hyper-converged structure, infrastructure, which will increase our scalability and our sustainability. So all of these things that are on this slide will be things that happen really behind the scenes. And we're hoping that there will be no impact on our user ends. They won't even know really these things have happened because we're going to try to plan it in such a way that we don't have to shut anything down. If we do have to turn something off, we will make sure there's advanced notice. But these are the things that the IT team will be working on behind the scene. That was all I had for the presentation. Just want to hear what questions you may have or what I might be able to answer. And I have Matt here to help as well on the end user side, if there's questions for him.
Thank you, Christina. I appreciate you putting this together. The board has been briefed on this upcoming migration. And I think we just wanted to make sure that this was a conversation that the community understood that this was going to be going on. We've always had great devices and technology accessible to our students on the front end. And sometimes those back end kind of changes, people aren't as aware of. But this is a big project that we have on our plate. Do any of the directors have questions or about this presentation or about what we've gotten in the briefings?
I'll just make a comment that I appreciate the microburst of PD because getting like all the PD up front, there's only so much that you can absorb in one go around. Plus, I think a number of teachers are similar in style like I am that I don't really understand it until I start to use it. And there's no way you can start to use everything that you learn if you do it in an all-day PD. Whereas if you do it in microburst, then you can go and you can use it. Then you come back with questions and then you can go and use the next one and come back with questions. So I really appreciate the understanding that that's what's going to our teachers use the technology to its best. So thank you very much.
And I just, I look forward to, I mean, Microsoft is a platform that many people in our community have access to already and have some familiarity. So hopefully, this transition with the support and the training you have lined up will be pretty smooth. Just to reiterate a point that you have briefed us on previously, a lot of this work is going to be happening in the summer, I understand, or during long weekends. So it's not going, these infrastructure changes are not going to be interrupting our, kind of, our day-to-day.
It will be our goal of not to interrupt the work of the teachers and the students. And if there is anything that for whatever reason we might say we need it down for an hour, we will give well-advanced notice, but it's, yes, absolutely, our goal, weekends, holidays, over the summer. But it will take about a year to transition everything, so that we make sure it's working before we completely cut over.
Well, I appreciate on behalf of the board, just all of the work and attention you've put. I mean, there's been a lot of research to figure out what the best path forward is. And it's exciting to see this. It's not something that's noticeable on the front end, but I think it will really kind of stabilize us on the overall platform. So I appreciate all of the effort that went into this. And thank you for keeping the board in the loop. If there's no more comments or questions, Kathy, I'm going to turn it over to you for our second item of the agenda, which is reviewing the new CDC guidelines, new Washington Department of Health guidelines.
You bet. So as the board of directors know, that March 25th, 2021, Governor Inslee announced that our state's physical distancing requirements within K-12 schools will be changed to follow the CDC guidance that was released on March 19th. So here tonight, we have our executive directors, Jim Gray, Deborah Hale, and Janelle Ephrim. They're going to share with you what this means for our schools and the thoughtful review process that they are undertaking to consider the changes and challenges and safety considerations with the new Washington Department of Health guidelines. So I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and he's going to start this off for the team. Jim?
Thanks, Kathy. Good evening, everyone. As Kathy stated, the CDC and subsequently Washington State Department of Health changed the social distance guidance for schools. This new guidance will require us to look critically at our protocols and spaces so that we may offer more in-person services for kids. As you can see, oh, excuse me. Jefferson, are you going to, there you go, buddy. Okay, next slide, please. As you can see, the guidance reduces the six-foot social distancing between students within classrooms down to three feet. However, this does not impact staff-to-student or staff-to-staff spacing recommendations. This still remains at a minimum of six feet. Also, as a quick reminder, guidance on brief moments such as transitions and recess remains the same. These are permissible as long as people utilize masks and continue moving. They're just brief moments of time. Next slide, please. It is essential to note that the new three-foot guidance is not universal across all school scenarios. As I stated, staff-to-staff and staff-to-student spacing remains six feet at all times. Six feet social distancing is still in order for common areas such as auditoriums and other gatherings, such as when kids meet up before school. Of special importance is six feet of social distancing when students are eating. VPS secondary schools have already moved to three lunches at every building to accommodate six feet of social distancing under the current cohorting model in place. And finally, PE choir and most music classes still require six feet of distancing also. Next slide, please. So what does this mean for VPS and our next steps? Deborah and I will continue to meet with building principals to assess how new requirements would impact school operations and schedules. We will collaborate with principals to identify maximum number of people in classrooms with three-foot social distancing in place between students and six feet between staff and students. Principals will inventory, are already inventorying spaces to determine actual ability to house more students. For instance, desk sizes and seating. We have some two-person, six-foot, or excuse me, five-foot desks in our schools. Even at three feet, is it possible to get two kids at that desk? We also have lunches and hallway transitions. What about before school as kids enter the buildings, now that they may possibly be all in attendance? And of course, PE and music classes, existing music and PE class challenges. We'll solicit feedback from principals on impacts of the six-foot to three-foot change to identify potential solutions. We'll review all safety protocols and consider any impacts from these new guidelines. Identify potential start dates based on the review of these new guidelines from the Washington Department of Health. We'll solicit input from labor partners with a final review by you, the board of directors, as to any recommendations. We'll develop a plan to communicate, a communication plan and timeline for staff, students, parents, and community, should changes be made. Deborah, Janelle, did I miss anything?
I don't think you missed a thing, Jim. Thank you.
No.
We wondered about questions. And then we're going to wonder about answers. But first, we're going to wonder about questions.
So I'm going to open it up to the directors. I just want to remind that we, Tracy and I just asked our executive team and the cabinet to put this together last week in light of the changing feedback. And so I just wanted to open up to questions. We don't have all the details figured out, so let's keep it high level. But I want to give directors an opportunity.
She's not answering the FaceTime.
I'll just say that, I guess, to me, the biggest sticking point is going to be those lunches at the, at all the levels, really, because in certain, as, you know, you can get three kids, you know, you can get more kids in classrooms at three feet, but as soon as you need to spread them out to six feet, you know, where do they go for lunch? Because some kids aren't eating in their classrooms for lunch. So I just know that that lunch thing is going to be hard. And I, given that our secondary classes are already going three lunches, my son is just so glad that he doesn't have the 9:15 lunchtime at the high school. So I just don't even know how, it boggles my mind. And I am just so thankful that you guys are on the task and you've got your minds wrapping around this tricky element of bringing in more kids.
Well, we are doing our best to wrap our minds around it, for sure.
Well, I just, I really appreciate kind of hearing kind of the plan of action in terms of figuring out all of the details because especially kind of eliciting that feedback at the building level. Because I know, you know, from our plans before, I mean, every building is so unique with kind of, you know, the parameters that they're, that they have in terms of how they're doing lunch and kind of just with their spacing. I mean, because I really do think that it sounds so, it sounds so easy, three feet. Okay, let's just bring back kids four days. And I think there are, when you start looking at all of the different parameters, there really are a lot of logistical pieces to figure out. And so I appreciate you guys having that plan of how you're going to figure out kind of, you know, what we need to do and how we're going to do it, just taking in that input from the building. So it's good to have this update. I'm glad to kind of know what our next steps are.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm just going to repeat some of what Tracy said because she just, she beat me to it. There are so many different moving parts to all of this. And I think it's, I think it's valuable to have this conversation even at the beginning publicly because, you know, people hear, oh, it's three feet to six feet. So now we can just double up how many students are in there because they cut the space in half. And it's just not that simple. And even like Jim pointed out, even looking at the furniture and how many, like, you can't, like, three feet doesn't accommodate two people, that are two people tables necessarily. So I think there's a lot of energy around the idea of bringing kids back from, for more time, more instructional time, creating more kids in the building at once. But it's not just a simple, like, okay, and now we move forward without, it does take a lot of planning. And so I appreciate your very thorough list of, was pretty much all of the questions that I would have asked. Here's what we need to figure out, this and this and this and this. And so I appreciate you going through all of that and being very mindful of all the different things that need to be, to be organized and figured out before we can move forward. And I don't, I do not envy you guys trying to figure out all of those answers. So thank you in advance for your efforts, because I just can't even wrap my head around some of those and what the potential solutions might be. So.
And you all know, I'm so sorry, Wendy, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just know that you all know so well that it's the principals who are just those on the ground in the moment and in the trenches, incredible generals in figuring all of these components out. So it's just only done because they roll up their sleeves and say, wait a minute, I'll figure this out or here's how we can. So we're, Jim and I meet with them, as you guys know, we meet with them regularly. And they had already, because we had heard, you know, rumors of changes before the governor actually, then CDC actually made these statements, we knew that they were out there as possibilities. Principals have given thought to this. And now it's going to be everybody coming to the table to see what does it really look like with all of those moving pieces. So it's, I just want to say all kudos to our principals who are the ones who make all of this work.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, Deborah, because like, so many times this year, like, my heart goes out to our principals because they've just had such an incredibly challenging year. And they've risen to the occasion and done amazing work this year. So thank you for saying that. I definitely, I share your feelings of appreciation, for sure.
Thanks.
The only, I guess, request that I would have is so that people out there on the different Facebook platforms and the different Twitter accounts and all of that have at least the opportunity to know what's going on, you know, what the decisions are that need to be made. If just that slide that you showed us of all the things that need to happen in order, if that could go out to the community or in some form, so that instead of going, I don't know why, I don't know why VPS can't do this. Here's what, here are the decisions that need to be made before VPS can do this. And here are the things that we're doing to make sure that it's done well, not just throw the extra kids in the room. I think it would be really helpful to maybe lift up the conversation a bit, fingers crossed.
No, and I was going to speak to Kathy's points. We keep beating each other's, the talking points. But just in the sense that, I think the goal of having this conversation is we see neighboring districts or districts across the county making different decisions. And one thing I've really valued is that Vancouver Public Schools has really stayed true to the guidance that comes from our public health departments. And we've, we've really stuck to that. And we are, we're going by the scientific and the medical, the recommendation. So, and it's hard sometimes when the community members feel differently because so-and-so is doing this or so-and-so is doing this. So one of the goals for tonight was just getting it out there. These are the decisions we need to work through so we can move forward. Because obviously, that's the goal, is to get more kids in the classroom as many days a week. And so we're all working on that. And we're all working to make it as safe as possible. But what are the logistical decisions that we have to get through? So I second Kathy's point. If there's communication that can go out to just explain what we're working on, because I think that that demonstrates we're being really thoughtful about this process. And we do, we're committed to getting our kids the best access to education that we can do. But we are adhering to the guidance that we got both state and nationally. Is there any other feedback? I really appreciate, because I feel like you had to put this together on short order. And I am so thankful, it's right before spring break. But we don't have a long school year left. And I think so for, to make some of these decisions, we need to make them soon. And I'm just very thankful that you put this thought into it tonight. And if there's opportunity to communicate to families, I think that'd be wonderful. I trust your judgment on that. Any other feedback from the directors? This is a very short meeting, I have to say. I anticipated an hour. So if no one else has any questions or feedback, I'm just going to say thank you to everyone again for just the community updates. We wanted just, because we waited until after spring break, that felt like a really long time. So we wanted to get a couple of updates out to the community. And then we're going to adjourn to executive session for our final topic on the agenda. There will be no action to follow. I'm going to give us an hour. And I'm going to do that because we intended, yeah, anyways, I'm going to give us an hour. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are all back after executive session. Just to clarify, it was executive session for personnel to discuss the performance of a public employee. We have completed our meeting for the night and we are ready to adjourn. So thank you and everyone have a safe and good spring break. Thank you.